Yes. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the second public hearing for the Resorts World New York City project. We would like to remind everybody, if you can please silence your cell phones and be respectful. I'll pass it on to the Chair of the Committee, Stacy Fefferamato.
Thank you very much. Okay. Good afternoon. Welcome to the second public hearing of the Resorts World New York City Committee Advisory Committee. My name is Stacy Fefferamato, Assemblywoman, Member for District 23, and I serve as the Chair of this committee. By law, the committee consists of members appointed by specific elected officials who represent the proposed project site. Other committee members joining me today are Nicole Garcia, appointed by Mayor Eric Adams, Stevens Martinez, appointed by Governor Kathy Hochul, Betty Bratton, appointed by Councilmember Adrian Adams, Senator James Sanders, self-appointed, and Queensborough President Donovan Richards is represented by Tariqa Morrison today. The CAC overview. This committee is statutorily charged with reviewing the Resorts World New York City application. To achieve this, each member of the committee has been reviewing the application, and today we are receiving public comment regarding Resorts World New York City. The Gaming Facility Location Board established September 30th, 2025 as the date by which a vote must be conducted as to whether the project should be advanced to the Gaming Facility Location Board. At this time, the applicant will be making their presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon to our esteemed Community Advisory Committee members. Good afternoon to the NiS Tech team. Good afternoon to all the people who made the trek this afternoon and this evening to share your feedback today. My name is Kevin Jones. I am the Chief Strategy and Legal Officer for Resorts World New York City, and I'm once again joined by Bob DeSalvio, our President of Genting Americas East, and Michelle Stoddard, our Senior Vice President of Community Development. Given that this is essentially our closing argument for this process, we wanted to start where we always start. By discussing the promises that Resorts World New York City has kept to date. These promises were collective ones, where we locked arms with many of the members of this CAC, the members of this audience, and countless other community residents and stakeholders to restore, revitalize, and reinvest in the Aqueduct Racetrack and the surrounding community. We want to highlight how, together, over the course of 15 years, through partnership and mutual support, we became the highest revenue-generating non-tribal casino in the U.S. outside of Vegas. We want to highlight how we generated more than $4.5 billion to the state's education fund. We want to highlight how we established a workforce of more than 1,000 team members, mostly from the community, who are paid the highest wages in the industry, no less. And we want to highlight how we achieved that distinction, and the distinction, of being the most diverse casino in the U.S., bar none. We achieved all of this while reducing crime in our neighborhood, increasing land values, improving the quality of life, and staying at the forefront of responsible gaming initiatives. From there, we want to illuminate five top reasons why Resorts World is a clear choice for a downstate commercial license. One, we have the fastest speed to market of anyone with thousands of new team members and a full commercial operation coming online in just six months. That's before the ground would even thaw for others to put shovels in it. And if that speed-to-market advantage is roughly five years faster than any new ground-up proposal, as we believe it is, that means five years of a minimum of $500 million in annual state education make-whole payments, plus five years of hundreds of millions in incremental revenue going to the state each year, with $1 billion in incremental revenue going to the state by the end of 2026 alone, plus five years of hundreds of millions in new revenue going just to the MTA, with $1 billion going to the MTA by the end of year five. And that's before new builds could even offer public transit discounts. That's five years and over $400 million of our roughly $1.5 billion community benefit package going directly to the community, and those revenues and benefits would continue with that five-year head start for the life of our license, which we hope would be 30 years and beyond. Second, we have the single best and the only site in New York City that was specifically planned for gaming since the 1800s and built to handle the traffic, yes, vehicular traffic, which is associated with any large casino, including our $5.5 billion world-class integrated resort. Three, we're the only bidder with the combination of New York's specific casino experience, New York State's specific commercial gaming experience, and a global team with a global vision. Four, we're the only bidder that has complete, and I mean signed, sealed, and delivered all of our collective bargaining agreements, our project labor agreement, and the entirety of our land use, SECRE, and state permits, where we could literally begin work tomorrow. And five, we have the fastest speed to delivering our community benefits because if we aren't already delivering them today, we will have them funded and in motion by the middle of next year. From there, we would have flowed pretty easily into some exciting updates and announcements since the last time we spoke before turning it back over to the public. But I want to call a quick timeout and do some real talk. When I watch some of the other public hearings, I have legitimate pause. Like at a certain point, I honestly thought this NiS Tech guy over here used to be on the Scary Spring Show. Real talk. And honestly, it's scary because nobody wants to be on the wrong side of history. There's a common vocabulary amongst us bidders. We all talk about overwhelming community support. In our case, it's real because Michelle right there made it so. We all use terms once in a generation. And I mean, we do it because we've already done it together before, in the same place that we are. And all of us rightly talk about the thousands of jobs that any project of this magnitude worthy of a gaming license would produce. But as we've seen, and I'm sure you've seen, there's some real emotion out there and real questions that are valid questions. There are topics and lots of repetition, but there are some that stand out. Traffic. What are you going to do about traffic? Real talk. The traffic that people can see with their own two eyes every day. Resorts World was built for it. We've been built for it since the 1800s. Our site accommodates thousands of vehicles on a regular basis seamlessly because the site was planned for it. The buildings, the schools, the homes, they were all built around our site, which was planned for gaming. But those passionate community voices are right. I don't know what other bids are going to do. Jobs. When are those jobs coming? And who is actually going to get them? We're ready to hire thousands of people by July of next year, and 80% of them are hyper-local. They can see their house from our hotel. I won't speak about, or I can't speak about others. Quality of life, trustworthy community engagement, and accountability. We've been doing this together for 15 years, and all Resorts World is trying to do is protect and grow what we've built together and do a lot more of the good that we are already doing every single day. I won't and can't speak for others. Housing and affordability. We are so glad that this issue showed up in this conversation. We've addressed it in the hands-down biggest and most comprehensive way with a commitment of $750 million over 30 years for 50,000 units of workforce housing for the people that make this city move. Those in the audience, our team members, police, firefighters, teachers. Watching those hearings almost had me. Like it literally had me down. But then I remembered, that's not us. That's not what the community around the Aqueduct Racetrack is about. We didn't just show up and try to impose our will. We got here together. We got here with 15 years of community partnerships, many representatives in this room who work with Michelle. We got here with 15 years of building and working with union partners from construction to operation as the largest employer of HTC in the entire state of New York. We got here with leaders like our CAC members. And we got here with a mandate from our community to transform our site and our success of what we built today to tomorrow's economic engine for Queens and this entire state. So in short, if you want to get one thing from today, know that there's hope. There's hope that your leadership, their leadership, our leadership, specifically in the case of Resorts World New York City, can produce, and I quote, "responsible, ethical, innovative, and employee- and community-minded expansion of access to economic opportunities." And that's a quote from the New York Gaming Facility Board's for New York Gaming Facility Board's request for applications in January of 2023. And we fully believe we're going to go beyond that with our bid, with your support, and with our team. Having said a mouthful, I'll pass it over to Bob.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, committee members, for having us here today. And most of all, thank you and the audience for giving us a little bit of your time. We really do appreciate it. I'm Bob DeSalvio, President of Genting Americas East, and I've said it before, and I'll proudly say it again. Working on this iconic and transformative expansion of Resorts World has been the most exciting and rewarding opportunity in my 40 years of experience in the gaming industry. The two previous times we were before you, I talked in detail about how we are utterly confident that our proposed $5.5 billion investment into our current 73-acre site, which was literally designed to be a gambling destination since the 1800s, will allow us to deliver the largest casino in the United States. I also took you through how the real magic happens when you combine our site and investment with a world-class design. It is through that combination with Genting's global experience that we will be able to tap into the magic of an integrated resort where the sum is greater than the parts. The synergies you get when you combine casino hotels with luxury and vast entertainment and leisure opportunities is the special sauce embedded in our DNA. That is when you become more than casino and offer jobs, revenues, amenities, and community reinvestment on an unmatched scale. As I've said before, I built and managed casinos with almost every major casino operator and can attest that nobody knows how to design and run an integrated resort better than Resorts World. Our project team, they're not here today, but I just want to remind you that we spent the last five years preparing this design with top firms in the business across over a dozen different disciplines. And it is with those firms and their top-tier expertise that we took our design through every step of land use, seeker, and the permitting process. All the public hearings and comment periods are done, and all the final approvals are done. All the public hearings and comment periods are done, and all the final approvals are in hand. There is literally nothing left for us to do beyond making good on our promise, which I stand on, to be open within six months of receiving a commercial license. Aqueduct is one of the oldest mass transit-oriented developments in New York City. Our current site has the benefit of access through three bus lines, shuttle services we currently operate, and the Aqueduct A-Train station. We plan to continue that accessibility as part of our $100 million community investment plan. Of that amount, $25 to $35 million will be invested into the A-Train station alone. First, we will replace the existing skybridge that connects the station directly into our facility. And second, this is the real game changer. We will use those funds to build a new southbound platform. These improvements will, uh, well, these improvements will help access for commuters, visitors, and transit workers. We also recognize that many will choose to drive. If you go anywhere in the country, you will see the most successful integrated resorts have parking capacity in the thousands to meet the demand. That is why our proposal will bring our parking to a total of 7,300 spaces, the majority of which will be covered. Our plan will build on the roadway improvements we have already made to Aqueduct over the last 15 years. It will ensure a smooth entrance into our facility without any traffic impacts to the surrounding community. We are confident in these circulation improvements based on our existing infrastructure, our proximity to the Belt, and the expansion of the Van Wick that is nearing completion. Still, speed to market aside, what continues to excite me the most about this entire project is our capacity to create 14,000 indirect jobs and 10,000 direct jobs, including 5,000 permanent positions and 5,000 union construction roles representing millions of union work hours. I cannot stress enough that we will deliver thousands of those jobs by this time next year. And those jobs are strong union jobs for our community with a six-figure median compensation package, even if you have zero college experience. When we last spoke, I said we would soon be launching the first of multiple Resorts World Career Centers at Jamaica Station, where Queens residents, commuters, and anyone interested in working at Resorts World will be able to walk in and learn about the litany of options available to them at the facility. I'm pleased to announce that the Resorts World Career Center at Jamaica Station will Queens residents, commuters, and anyone interested in working at Resorts World New York City will be able to walk in and learn about these opportunities, and I warmly and cordially invite you to go check it out. Also, when we last spoke, I said we would soon be hosting onsite seminars with our dealer school trainers to directly engage our neighbors and show them what they can expect working at an integrated resort of this size and caliber. I am pleased to announce that we will be cutting the ribbon on the Resorts World Dealer Experience Center in our atrium at 1:30 PM tomorrow as well. And I also invite you to come and join us and see for yourself. And if that weren't enough to show how hard it worked we've been since we last were together, I'm pleased to announce yet again another opening, this time regarding our food and beverage offerings. At the July 21 hearing, we spoke at length about the 30-plus world-class restaurants and bars that are part of our project and how our aim is to tap into the uniquely rich, multicultural culinary scene here in Queens. As you will no doubt remember, we even brought in some of our celebrity chef partners to be present with us. What you may not have known is that during this entire time, we've been well into a total refresh of our current food court offerings where we're leaning into the very same multicultural themes. As part of this process, I'm pleased to announce that we will be cutting the ribbon on the new Vibe Barbecue outlet by celebrity chef Marcus Samuelson in our food court at Resorts World Casino tomorrow at 2 PM. Now, I see Chef Keith is out in the audience, and he is going to kill me for saying this, but I'm inviting you all to come over and check it out. So sorry, Keith, we got to leave and get to work. You can put me in the kitchen if it would help. Probably wouldn't help, but. Vibe Barbecue reflects the longer-term commitment that Chef Marcus Samuelson has with our site and with our proposed expansion. Chef Samuelson's idea with Vibe Barbecue is to capture the universal backyard, family and friends vibe of eating fresh, delicious barbecue, and sides that are all infused with his unique flavors. If you make it out, expect to be treated with some really incredible smoked chicken wings, smoked brisket sandwiches, dry-rubbed ribs, collards, mac and cheese, and M's cornbread, just to name a few of the items. Well, now that you've heard what we're up to on both the jobs and the food and beverage front, Michelle will tell you a little bit more what we're continuing to do in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. As a day one employee at Resorts World, who has worked with many of you on countless community partnerships and initiatives, you already know how much pride I take in the great work that Resorts World does in the community. You also know how I like to let our actions speak louder than our words. But to understand the work we do, we still have to start by recapping our core values. We're the most diverse gaming property in the U.S., period. That is no accident. We're the most diverse because diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging programs set the gold standard. As I've said before, we don't stop with, we don't stop with our own workforce. We apply these same DEIB principles to make sure we're generating real opportunities for minority women and, I'm sorry, for minority and women-owned business enterprises and service-disabled veteran-owned businesses. We also maintain a focus on utilizing small businesses to build a diverse supply chain. As I've said many times, we don't and can't do this work alone. That is why we're so excited to work with Senator Saunders to successfully launch the Southeast Queens Business Incubator last year. Our appreciation, our application contains letter after letter showing overwhelming community support for the work that we're doing. And to all those who have said so many nice things about my hard work, I say thank you from the bottom of my heart. But my work today is easy. I'm not going to try to describe all the work that we do or summarize all those letters of support and partnership after partnership. Instead, I will just preview some of the people and organizations who have benefited from our efforts. And like last month, they will speak to you from their own perspectives. Last time, you heard from our local elected officials and many others who lead our hospitals, our local nonprofits, our community groups, and our business associations. We are hopeful that you will hear from similar leaders and community members today. While they are all, while they all deserve mention, there are a few who I'd like to specifically shout out, knowing the work that we're doing together today. They include Ellen Codadat from Flushing Town Hall, Dennis Walcott from Queens Public Library, Roger Jenjen from New Hamilton Beach Civic Association, another Resorts World Day One employee like me, Brian Chen from Chinese Planning Council, Francine Popo from the Sisters of Noted Dream Education Center, Mark Mariel from National Urban League and the Gumbo Coalition. His representative, Lavelle, Lavelle, is going to be speaking later today. Sin Clark from the Iri Jam Foundation, Wendy Pfeffer, I'm sorry, Wendy Pfeff, Gennaro from Queens Center for Progress, Bobby Denise Cole from Empower My Hood, Dion Song Hu from Flushing Bid, Stephen Sanjener from Kiwanis Club of Howard Beach, Kaffa Kado from World, I'm sorry, Queens World Film Festival, and Candace Prince from the NAACP Jamaica branch. And those are just to name a few. We're confident that granting of a commercial license will allow us to scale up our efforts with each of these partners even more, and in turn, to go from having a positive impact to being truly transformative. Lastly, I have a brief update regarding the RW Gives program that I run on behalf of Resorts World. RW Gives is an existing program that we expect, that we're expanding to provide more than $25 million in direct grants to local nonprofits and causes during the next five years at the rate of $5 million per year starting next year. Applications are done through the RW Gives website where the public can access more information. RW Gives focuses on Queens, but we have provided funding throughout the entire city across a range of focus areas from arts and culture to economic development to health and wellness and many more. We also support a growing footprint of organizations that provide critical services on Long Island, such as the Long Island Children's Museum and Long Island Community Chest. When we last spoke, I outlined how we had funded over $250,000 in new community grants between July and August alone. And now, in the few weeks between our last presentation and today, less than a month, we have funded another $100,000 in community grants. One of those grants has gone to Video Music Box Collection, the foundation to help Queens own Ralph McDaniel's do the important work of preserving the history of hip-hop, much of which was born right here in the world's borough. Now I'll turn it back over to Kevin, who will wrap up with an important update on our community benefits package. Kevin?
So when we last spoke, we went over a slide that apparently got a lot of attention. This slide summarizes our community benefits package, the five different elements of it, right? It goes over the $25 million in expanded Resorts World Gives program that Michelle's just outlined. That's an annual commitment of $5 million a year. Now, bear in mind, it's got a lot of questions about this, this is just the first five years. That's why we're highlighting it. That's, that's $425 million once again before some of the others will put a shovel in the ground. That's why we highlighted it. But this continues on. That $25 million commitment continues on at $5 million a year. The 100 million in community infrastructure, that's built into our project. So that's built up and operational within five years. That's the 12, that's the 12 acres of park space. That's the, the new southbound platform that Bob mentioned. That's a one-shot deal because it's done in five years. The 125 in workforce housing initiative, that's $25 million a year that is going into workforce housing. Workforce housing that we've already started to do. I'm just going to preview the announcement I have. Last week, we just gave another $600,000 to Seres for the Flushing Workforce Development Then you have the $50 million in Resorts World Innovation Campus Grants. That is just to be able to get the innovation campus in the fund up and going. That's the legal work. That's the structuring. That's the programming to make sure we deliver on a timely basis everything we said we were going to do. And then last but not least, there's the $125 million, which is a different $125 million from the workforce housing initiative. That's another $25 million every year going into the innovation campus and fund, not just to do the things on-site, to do things all around Queens, all around New York City, and on Long Island with the help of these very CAC members should we be able to get through this process. So we went through all the pillars. You know what they're about. I already went right into the announcement that we gave another $600,000 into the Flushing Workforce Development Initiative, which is a $300 million program that's going to produce in and of itself 3,000 units of workforce housing. This workforce housing that will be built, people will be living there before others could get a shovel in the ground. And these are communities, entire communities, that come complete with their own workforce training programs in all sorts of industries. And the whole aim, in and of itself, with financial literacy programs, senior care, healthcare, is to build stronger communities. Now, you also, as you came in, would have gotten an issue of, of what we call Queens Get the Paper. Why would we stop to highlight that? We stopped to highlight that because it also, we, we also want to stand on and highlight the authenticity of our bid, the reason why, I think we're going to hear from a lot of people in this audience who've worked with us, the reason why we went out and wanted to work with Nas and have Nas come on as a partner with us, because some of the artists that we focus in here, despite the fact that they're world-renowned, this is their first time on a magazine cover. And that first issue, that first issue that we put out that's on each one of these chairs, that had 10 million impressions. 10 million people saw those. So what do we do? We double down. We're coming out with the second issue that we're hoping will reach 20 million people, which showcased all sorts of people. This is the type of stuff that we can do and lean into if we just get the ability to get going. I'm going to cordially invite you in advance. We got the request in. I hope it's, I hope it's a yes, but we'd love to invite you all back to Borough Hall to have a Queens Fest for Thanksgiving, where we bring food trucks and tables and dining here, and we package up, and we feed families. We don't, we don't throw frozen turkeys and hit people over the head with them. That's not what we do. But we will feed no less than 1,000 families on Thanksgiving, and I invite you to come out for that. And, and Ralph is not just Uncle Ralph. He's not just, you know, the protector of our digital hip-hop history. Ralph also helps Nas and the Mass Appeal Team coordinate our tour drives, which we've been doing in been doing in Queensbridge every year for the last few years. We invite you to come out and help us because we want to expand it all over Queens this year. We're doing that regardless of whether we get a license, though I damn sure hope we get a license. At the end of the day, there's one more point that we got to leave you with. Today, today, the state gets 1.7 million dollars from us every single day. That's money that does not otherwise come from us from our gross gaming revenue, that goes to the state for the state to hand out in some form or fashion. And we've already said it, it's in our materials, we'll no less than double that between what we do directly and indirectly. That's another 1.7 million a day. Do the math on that. Since the time that we first sat down, no, since the time we we submitted our bid in June, June 27th, those 80 days, you do the math on that, that was 1.7 million dollars a day that the state lost out on because we didn't have a commercial license. We need to do this and do this now. Our people need places to live. We want to do more with all of you in the community. So if you stand with us, and I sure hope you didn't come out today to start trouble, if you stand with us and you really stand with us, let them know how much you support us so the state can stop losing 1.7 million dollars a day.
Thank you for the presentation. Before we begin, there are some ground rules. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the community to offer comments on Resorts World New York City and not a venue for the public to ask questions of either the committee members or the applicant. Individuals wishing to speak must sign up at the registration table. We will be taking speakers on a first-come, first-serve basis. Speakers will be allowed two minutes to present their statement. A countdown timer is visible, so each speaker is aware how much time they have remaining. In-person attendance will be capped when at capacity. Today's hearing is being livestreamed, recorded, and will be posted online soon after the event concludes. The recording will be closed, captioned for the hearing impaired. In addition to presenting comments today, there are additional ways to provide comment. The committee will also receive comments by electronic mail at ResortsWorldNewYorkCityPublicComment@NYSTEC.com or by mail, which should be directed to Resorts World New York City Community Advisory Committee, care of New York State T E C, 540 Broadway, Third Floor, Albany, New York, 12207. All comments spoken, emailed, and written will be documented and given equal review and weight by committee members. While there is no deadline for submitting comments, please note that the committee must complete its work by September 30, 2025. Those wishing to submit comments are advised to do so as quickly as possible. If you have already submitted a comment in writing via email or mail, please do not sign up to speak if you simply plan to read your comments verbatim. Finally, attendees must remain respectful and courteous. Disruptions will be not, will not be tolerated. Anyone using offensive, threatening, or obscene language or behavior may be asked to leave at the discretion of any committee member.
Thank you. We would like to give public officials preference with the speaking. If you're a public official, please come up to the mic.
Good afternoon, everybody.
You can turn around, please address the committee, sir.
I know the committee, so maybe I don't know you, but hi, committee. I'm Leroy Comrie, I'm New York State Senator. I hope the committee doesn't defend it, but I think it's talking to the public is most important so that you understand how I feel. Resorts World has been a great partner to our community. It's employed people, they've never turned down an opportunity to work with a nonprofit. They have set the standard for what can happen in New York as far as gaming is concerned. They deserve a full license without a doubt because they created the opportunity for gaming resources to be understood and appreciated by New Yorkers. It would be a travesty if the commission picks other people other than Resorts, who have set the standard, who's been a great community partner, who's worked hard to establish relationships, their new plan for the expansion of their property, and what they want to do between building housing and creating opportunities is only good for Queens. I'm a state senator, I've been privileged to see most of the plans. I understand that most of the communities in the other boroughs don't want their casinos. We don't have that problem in Queens. I haven't heard maybe 10 people that have come to me and said that they don't want Resorts. And the reason why they don't want Resorts are personal reasons that have nothing to do with their ability to deliver services, nothing to do with how they've treated people, nothing to do with how they've made sure that there were protections for even folks that like to gamble. Resorts deserves to have this time. Oh, I'm not on time? Okay, cool. So I'm trying to be respectful of both sides. So I'm going to turn around and say to the panel again, thank you for listening, everyone. Thank you, panel, excuse me, but I wanted to talk to the community, but Resorts deserves to get a full gaming license, and I know that I will be working with you all, as I've said in my conference in Albany, as I've said on the floor in Albany, Resorts deserves to have a full gaming license. Thank you all.
Would like to call a representative from the Congressman Gregory Meeks office to the mic, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Nathaniel Hezekiah III. I'm the Congressman Gregory Meeks's Deputy Chief of Staff. I'm here to read a statement on his behalf. Good afternoon. I'm Congressman Gregory W. Meeks, proud to represent New York's fifth congressional district in Queens. Today I come before you to seek the full and fair consideration of Resorts World New York City's expansion plan, a visionary proposal that can deliver transformative, oh, I'm sorry, transformative benefits to Southeast Queens and for New York as a whole. Queens has always deserved bold investment. For far too long, too many of our families, workers, and neighborhoods have waited for opportunities that match our potential. I believe this expansion is about creating economic opportunities, building infrastructure, and ensuring long-term community renewal. First, let's appreciate that this expansion will create 24,000 jobs, 5,000 union construction that will come online sooner than any other proposal, 5,000 permanent jobs, a major, a majority of which will be filled by Queens residents, 14,000 indirect jobs throughout our region. Secondly, this proposal includes investments that go beyond the casino's walls, public green space, transit improvements, community infrastructure, workforce training, education, and programs that support women, minority-owned, and veteran-owned businesses. And even today, I attended the Resorts World ribbon-cutting of the Resorts World New York Jamaica Station Career Center, another place that will add more jobs to our community. Thirdly, I want to emphasize the revenue that this will, that this will generate far beyond this campus. More money to education on top of the 4.5 billion that they have already given, another billion to the MTA over the next five years. Think about the impact of tourism that this will have all over the city. As we are fighting the save funds in Washington, D.C., this is the kind of private sector cover that we need right now. Finally, I know your mandate to assess where the community stands. You have not only heard today, not only in August, but practically every day since October 2011, how much this community supports Resorts World. We have spoken, they have listened, they have acted, they have delivered. So as your congressman, I fully support Resorts World's expansion plan. I urge the state authorities, the Gaming Commission, and all decision-makers to give this plan the full and fair consideration that it deserves. Let's seize this opportunity for Queens, New York, for the hard-working families who deserve nothing less but their full share of growth, development, investment, and hope. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to call speakers 1 to 10 at the mic. Please line up in your, in the order of your number, 1 to 10.
My name is Frank Calucio. On September 4th, CB10 voted unanimously to express our support for Resorts World. Therefore, today, I am the voice speaking for Community Board Danny at Queens. In a nutshell, 15 years of working together toward common objectives. 15 years ago, July 2010, Resorts World was unknown to CB10 when it was selected to develop the Red Casino. Just look at a map, it will show Resorts World on racetrack sits in the middle of CB10's district. All our neighbors were concerned about what kind of neighbor would Resorts be. Resorts World introduced itself to CB10 July 2010 at a well-attended meeting, convened, and we listened and we learned. The meeting was when we began to work, uh, working, to begin working a constructive relationship between Resorts and its House Committee. Now, 15 years later, the constructive relationship was, we envision, is now will establish, is the result of the work done together year in year, in and year out. Just like any relationship, we've gone through the good and the bad. Goodwill and perseverance coupled with mutual respect and communication have proven to be a winning combination as we work with Resorts through the years. Resorts World is not unknown to us now. Today, our once-new neighbor is our old neighbor. In our view, what has been done in our community matters. We know that there will be change to come. It clearly demonstrates why Resorts World's application should advance to the next step in the current process. We support Resorts World because we know the community understands the value of working together to achieve common goals and has demonstrated that for the past 15 years. And I made it.
Good afternoon to the committee and to everyone in this room. My name is Warlito Deleon, and I am a Day One employee of Resorts World. Two minutes is going to go by fast, I can talk about Resorts World for a long time, but, excuse me, I wanted to just give a personal testimony of what Resorts World has meant to me and kind of talk also a bit about sort of my day-to-day and how Resorts World has given me the opportunity to impact people in the community. So just really quickly about myself, I immigrated here to Queens from the Philippines when I was only a year old, so I like to say I'm a Queens native, and I grew up in Ozone Park, just blocks away from the Resorts World site. And next month, I'll actually be working there for 14 years. And I've worn a couple of different hats at Resorts World. I started in marketing, I was the manager of VIP Services, then I moved to community development. I've had the privilege of working with Michelle Stoddard on her team, and now I work in our Human Resources Department as the Training Manager. So I have the opportunity to train our incredible staff of over 1,000 people. I know everyone's name, I've trained them in person, and I'm just really proud of the work that I'm able to get to do. I train on topics such as responsible gaming, which is a topic that's very near and dear to me. I've had family members affected by it, so I feel grateful to train our team members on the importance of it, how to spot the warning signs, how to lead people to resources. I'm coming up on time, so I just want to end with just lots of gratitude for the Resorts World team. Thank you again for everyone coming out, and I express my unanimous support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Stephanie, and I have been proud to work at Resorts World Casino for five years. I started my career there as a patrons claims coordinator. From there, I was given the opportunity to transfer to the hotel as a guest service agent, which served as a chance to grow in an exciting and very new direction. That opportunity changed the course of my career and my life. A year later, thanks to the support of Brian Toomey and Pa Sengarung, I was able, I was given the opportunity to grow into the role of a hotel's operations floor manager, and most recently promoted as the hotel front office manager. Each step of my journey with this company has proven that when opportunities are offered and supported, you can truly thrive. I stand here as proof that Resort World Casino absolutely offers those opportunities. A part of what makes my story meaningful is that I was born and raised right here in Queens. I've lived across the street from this property my entire life, so when I walk through the doors each day, I don't just see a casino or a hotel, I see the same neighborhood that shaped me, the same schools I attended, and the same community I want to continue serving. Often, I lead some of our tours at the hotel, and a personal fun fact that I like to share is when you look out the floor-to-ceiling windows from our presidential suite, I can point out my entire childhood, my home, my middle school, my, and my high school. For me, this property is more than a workplace, it's a part of my life story. Looking ahead, I'm especially excited about the vision for our new casino and hotel. I hope to continue being a part of that growth and to help make sure it doesn't just mean new walls and new rooms, but new opportunities. The expansion will provide new opportunities to our friends, our families, and our neighbors to thrive, and opportunities for families to feel the pride that mine feels in me every day. At the end of the day, the walls and rooms can be built anywhere, but it's the people, the guests, and the community that bring them. Queens natives, just like me. I'm excited for the future, for myself, for my team, and for our casino and our hotel, for our diverse guests, and most importantly, for the community that we serve.
Good afternoon. My name is Aisha, and I'm the Vice President of Asian Marketing at Resorts World. My journey with Resorts World began 14 years ago on the preopening team, back when the building was still a construction site. I had just moved to New York and was trying to find my footing. Today, I am proud to call Queens my home, and Resorts World has become so much more than just a job to me. When I started as a manager, I never envisioned I would rise to Vice President, but through mentorship and leadership development, Resorts World gave me the opportunity to realize my potential. As an Asian immigrant woman, I never thought I could come this far. It's clear to me that this company truly embraces diversity and empowers people from all backgrounds to succeed. Because of that support, I've been able to build a stable life for my family. The high-quality jobs and strong benefits provided by this company allowed my son to complete his college and law school education, and we can live a comfortable life. I'm a success story, and I honestly wouldn't be here today without Resorts World. Over the years, I've also have privileged of contributing to our community, working with local leaders to strengthen our neighborhoods, because Resorts World's commitment to giving back aligns with my strong belief in supporting the communities that support us. I can say firsthand that this project represents real people and real lives, not just business plans, it's a promise of a brighter future. For our team, it's a promise of continued growth and development. For our neighbors, it's a promise of more stable jobs and chances to build a life, just like the one I've been fortunate enough to build here. Your support can turn this vision into reality.
Good afternoon. My name is Patricia Robinson. I'm both here as a proud resident of Queens and Chief Administrative Officer of the Greater Jamaica Development Corporation. I want to speak in support of this proposal because I know firsthand the difference it can make. For years, they've been a staple partner in our community. Through their grants, they've invested more than $3 million into organizations that I've seen serve families, seniors, and youth. They're not just writing checks, they're standing shoulder to shoulder with local groups, improving that community investment is at the core of its mission. Now with this proposal is innovative thinking. A STEM Innovation Center right here in Queens means that our young people will have access to cutting-edge learning, coding, robotics, and 21st century skills without leaving their neighborhood. And as someone who works- And as someone who works every single day to expand opportunity, I see how transformative that will be. It will be preparing our children not only for jobs, but for futures filled with possibilities that extends into our households. And the promise of more than 10 acres of community green space speaks to another critical need, and a borough as vibrant and as crowded as ours, safe, open space is essential. It means places where families can gather, comorbidities can diminish, where health and wellness can flourish, and where our neighborhoods can breathe. I'm so excited about this proposal that I've decided to sign up for the York College Resorts World Gaming Hospitality Training Program, so I can become a better advocate, so when they do grant, get the license granted, which they will, because I'm speaking that into existence, that I will become a better advocate partner in the community to continue to kind of showcase their great work. So thank you, and I'm in support of this proposal.
Hi, my name is Ralph McDaniel. I am here to support the license for Resorts World. I've been working with Resorts World for the last five years. We do programs during the holiday season, toy giveaways, as well as school, back-to-school giveaways. Long Island City, a tough community, we go there, we talk to the kids, I bring Resorts World in, makes our job a little bit easier to support the kids in that area with the help of Resorts World, and it's been, gonna happen again in December, and as well as we work with the Gumbo Coalition. The Gumbo Coalition is an amazing program that Resorts World does, I speak as a lecturer there, and we talk about the service industry. So young people, not just putting them into the jobs, they train the people before they get to the jobs, which is pretty amazing, because most of these big corporations don't do that. And like I tell Michelle and Kevin, you know, I tell them about the communities, I work with the Queens Public Library currently now, full-time, and I go into 40 different communities, which are totally different. I'm in Flushing, I'm in Corona, I'm in Jamaica, Queens, I'm in Long Island City, I'm in all these different areas which are unique, and that's the amazing thing about Queens, New York. And, and we tell them, this is how this community does what they do, and this is what this community does what they do, and they wanna learn about every community. So it's important that we, we, we support this program, we support what Resorts World is doing. I'm a Queens resident for, went to Bayside High School, graduated from LaGuardia Community College, that's where I got my first degree, and went on to get other degrees, but my first degree was at LaGuardia Community College, and a longtime supporter of Leroy Comrie, who's a good friend of mine for years, and I'm glad to be here, and this is amazing, this is the first time I've ever done something like this, but thank you.
My name is Carl Polinas, I'm former president of the Friends of Maple Grove, a non-for-profit organization in Queens. I'm here with Helen Day, the Vice President, and with Sean Miller, our student intern and living historian. On behalf of the Friends, we are very grateful for the deep, with deep gratitude for Resorts World for their generous support. A $5,000 grant that made possible the creation of our book, Peaceful Rest and Everlasting Glory, which honors 27 young men of Kew Gardens who gave their lives in World War II.
Seventy-eight years ago, a memorial was raised in their honor, a sacred place where neighbors once gathered, a place of reverence and respect, but as time passed, the years dulled its memory, and though it stood in plain sight, the meaning faded from view. This book has brought those names back to life. It tells the stories of these young men, some as young as 19, who once walked the streets of this community of Kew Gardens, who loved Queens as their home, and who went forward bravely to defend our nation.
Now, nearly 80 years later, their faces and their stories rise again from the pages. Resorts World has helped us bridge the gap of time so that a new generation may honor them and carry their memory forward. You have made it possible for an entire community to pause, reflect, and give thanks once more.
So today, from the depths of our heart, we thank Resorts World. You have not only funded a project, you have restored memory, honor, and dignity to heroes who must never be forgotten. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Janice Cristal Essencio. I'm the Acting Chairperson of the Department of OB-GYN at Jamaica Hospital Medical Center. It is a great honor to come today to support the project that Resorts World proposes. My experience with Resorts World has been through their philanthropy, and not just philanthropy, but I've worked with many organizations that will give, but to work shoulder to shoulder with Michelle and her team was indeed an honor. We have a gathering every holiday around Thanksgiving called Friendsgiving, and we were able to, over the years, maybe feed 400 people or so with their participation, and it was about 800 people this last holiday season. Another collaboration we did with the Resorts World team was over the holidays, not only was there a pediatric toy drive that, or residents of the Queens area were able to participate in, but we also had another holiday feeding frenzy where we were able to do, at least 500 people were able to give meals to. So as an OB-GYN, a question might come up, why are you so interested in feeding the people? It really was giving an opportunity for them to see us not just as a place where they could get healthcare, but also partners in giving them healthy meals and opportunity. And so I really appreciate the team for their work with us in serving the community, and again, I would like to say that we support the proposal. Thank you.
Welcome to the committee. My name is Bill Knight. I am the co-founder and Executive Director of a nonprofit organization called Friends of Phil Rizzuto Smokey Park. It's a small company, we've only been around for a couple of years, but we certainly have understand and appreciate the work that Resorts World has done for the community, particularly with respect to a non, it partnership with nonprofit organizations. On behalf of Friends of Phil Rizzuto Smokey Park, we totally, entirely endorse, support the licensing of Resorts. We know that they are a tremendous asset to the community, a huge development economic engine for development, and their ability to provide excellence in their services, particularly aligned to nonprofit organizations, which we are, which we are one. Again, we just want to say that thank you very much for this opportunity, and we fully support the license.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Willie Stotts, and I'm a proud member of the Hotel and Gaming Council, and a day-one employee of Resort World, and I wholeheartedly, I'm sorry, I wholeheartedly support Resort World and its proposal, because not only is it gonna be creating thousands and thousands of more jobs, but also because they create opportunities for people and families in this community to flourish and thrive and make it here in New York, and they invest in the community. They have been investing, and they will continue to invest in the community, so on behalf of the union and workers like me, I encourage you to vote yes to not only expand and grow Resort World, but to expand and grow this community. Thank you.
Thank you. We're calling numbers 11 to 20 at the mic. Please line up 11 to 20.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dennis Eberich, I'm a council representative for the New York City District Council of Carpenters. Resorts World New York City stands as a world-class destination because it was built by union hands and is sustained every day by union excellence. Resorts World understands that it is essential that its $5.5 billion expansion utilize the same skilled union workforce to lead the way. It's because of Resorts World that steadfast commitments to good jobs, safe work sites, and a future built for and by New Yorkers that I strongly support its proposal to become a fully licensed casino. New York City needs and deserves projects like this right now. Many of you have seen the economic engine that the Resorts World has become. They've done everything right. They've paid us a fair wage to build it, and they pay our union brothers and sisters a fair wage to run it. We need the jobs that they have promised, that we know they will deliver. And I'm confident in saying this is because Resorts World New York City has been a true partner of union labor since day one. They see the quality, commitment, and value we bring. They put their money where their mouth is time after time, and I'm happy to partner with them again on this historic expansion that will deliver thousands of construction and permanent union jobs to New York City. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Hunt, I'm a steamfitter with Local 638. As you've heard throughout this process, Resorts World has always been committed to building with union labor. They have a deep appreciation for the skill, the quality, and the safety that we deliver on the job site. It's why we've worked together almost 15 years ago to get the casino built 365 days from groundbreaking. When COVID-19 threatened to put many of us out of work, Resorts World worked with us to keep construction of the Hyatt going in the safest way possible. They helped many of us put food on the table without putting our lives at risk, and showed clear responsibility and excellent leadership throughout the process, never mind the economic development that it would create for the community. As a Queens member and a local based out of Queens, New York, we really appreciate the efforts that go into this, and we're very excited to be a part of this project. Thank you.
My name is Joe Dabo. I am a resident of Ozone Park, born and raised, and I want to thank the CAC for their time and consideration of this application of which I support. And I want to thank Resorts World, and that's mainly why I'm here today as a resident of Ozone Park, is to thank Resorts World. You know, there's a lot of fear in Ozone Park when it's all of a casino is gonna come into our neighborhood. And just today, I was talking to Jimmy D'Angelo, Jimmy D'Angelo was right across the street from the casino, and Jimmy at that time, 13 years ago, says, Joe, if a casino's here, I'm gonna move, I'm outta here, I'm taking my family and moving. He was there for 40 years. I spoke to Jimmy today, Jimmy still lives in Ozone Park, across the street from the casino. Why? Because Resorts World's been a great neighbor. You know, it's great to see something go from an idea to a reality, a concept to a creation, that's the benefit I've had, living in Ozone Park, I've seen that. And that fear is gone, and to go from ribbon-cutting to, to, from construction, breaking ground to ribbon-cutting, thank God for our union workers, they did a great job. And then the promise, the promise of creating more union jobs, thank you to the union workers who are there now, because, again, those jobs, and the promise of educational funds, $5 billion later, thank you, Resorts World is there. During Sandy's, Resorts World was there for us, and Sandy being a staging here, during COVID, Resorts World was there for us then. Resorts World's always been there for our community. So this is not a risk for this CAC to vote on, this is a proven commodity in Ozone Park. This is a proven commodity for our city, this is a proven commodity for our state, an asset, a proven asset, that we can only invest in even further for more jobs, more educational funding, more benefits to our community. So I want to plead to this CAC, please vote in favor to this proven asset, this proven commodity that our community, our city, our state truly needs. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kat Watts, and I am a Human Resources Director from Resorts World Catskills as well as Hudson Valley. I've worked for Resorts World for a little bit over six years. I started out as a business partner in the Catskills office, and from there forward, some of these men and women in the audience took a personal and professional interest in me, and developed me and invested in my education and my learning of my job so that I could grow to become a Director of Human Resources. The biggest thing for me to get forward to you guys as a group is just the point of, the reason why I work for Resorts World. I work for Resorts World because as a human resources person, integrity is what matters. I want to be able to recruit for people good jobs at places where their employer actually cares for them. And Resorts World has proven that they care about their employees. During COVID, Resorts World covered their employees' benefits through the duration of our closure, and also made sure that for the first six weeks, all team members were paid. This showed me that while no one else was looking, Resorts World cared about their people. And I think that as you can tell from what they've done in this community now and going forward, they are the team that you should bet on. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the CAC. My name is Devon Lomax, I'm the Political Director for DC9 of the Painters and Allied Trades Union. We come out in full support of this project. We support this project because for almost 15 years, Resorts World has shown us their commitment to our communities, their commitment to union careers and construction, to apprenticeship programs. The other reason why we support this project is because of their workforce investment housing. You heard earlier, someone say that members of the community can see their homes from, from the casino, but with this investment in workforce housing, they're gonna ensure that members of my community can keep their houses, raise their families there, and continue their careers. A wise rapper from Queensbridge once said, "If you don't take chances, you'll never find the answers." And so that's why we're asking you to take a chance, because quite frankly, they deserve it. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Sandy Barrera. I'm the Vice President of Compliance in Resorts World Catskills in Monticello, New York. I want to take a few moments to share the impact that Resorts World had had not only my personal life, but the community that I call home. Over the past eight years, I've been able to grow my career from a revenue audit manager to casino controller, and now the Vice President of Compliance. All of that was possible through the teamwork, support, leadership, and mentor that Resorts World provided to me. This project isn't just about a casino, it's about our future. Resorts World offers good-paying and stable jobs to the community for people like me to be able to advance their career while staying rooted in the community that they grew up in. But the impact doesn't stop at careers. Resorts World has partnered in our community with humanity for Habitat builds, back-to-school shopping drives, and Christmas giving trees. I've seen firsthand how this company gives back and uplifts its family in need. That's why I believe that this project is more than just about a casino, it's about creating opportunities, strengthening communities, and continuing a track record of positive impact. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will support your project, as I know it'll make a difference in this community.
My name is Anthony Bruno. I'm currently the SVP of Operations for Resorts World Hudson Valley and Resorts World Catskills. Over the years, I've seen firsthand how a great employer can truly change lives, including my own. I started my career with Resorts World fresh out of college in an entry-level finance position 22 years ago. After several years in finance, I found my passion in operations. During this time, I had the honor to be part of the opening team of Monticello Casino and Raceway, Resorts World Catskills, the Alder Hotel at Resorts World Catskills, and just three years ago, the very successful opening of Resorts World Hudson Valley in Newburgh. At Resorts World, I was able to grow my career and expand my education in the same place I've always called home. Resorts World isn't just a place to work, it's a company deeply committed to the community it serves. From supporting local schools and small businesses, to partnering with nonprofits and providing disaster relief as needed, Resorts World consistently shows up when and where it matters. That kind of impact goes beyond business. It's about building a better future for all of us. In closing, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to hear a bit of my story. I'm proud to be a part of a company that invests in its people and its communities, and I look forward to seeing Resorts World continue to grow right here in Queens, uplifting team members and the community just like it did for me. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Alice Chu, Senior Vice President of Jimmy Crystal, New York. I am here today with both gratitude and conviction to ask you to approve Resorts World New York City's expansion and Class 3 license. For over 14 years, I have worked with Resort World. They are more than a casino, they are a two-community partner. They gave my small business the chance to grow by opening a shop inside their building. They sponsored community events, they supported us in ways that made a real difference. And it is not just my story, Resort World has lifted up schools, youth programs, nonprofits, and culture organizations all across Queens. Their record is clear, thousands of good-paying union jobs, billions of dollars for our public schools, and ongoing support for families and neighborhoods. What makes them stand out is that they are ready right now. The building's here, the stuff is here, the experience is here. Others are still planning, but Resort World can deliver immediate jobs, immediate tax revenue, and immediate results for New Yorkers. For 14 years, I have seen their honesty, reliability, and commitment. They have earned our trust, and they have earned this license. This decision is about more than business, it is about choosing a partner who is a very potent, they will grow with the community, not part from it. I strongly urge you to approve I strongly urge you to approve Resort World's expansion and grant them the Class Three license. It is the right choice for Queens, for New York City, for our future. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Annie Ramkarat, and I'm a proud member of the Hotel Gaming Trade Council. I support Resorts World Casino proposal because it's not just about jobs today. It's about building a better community. Resorts World has already been creating life-changing jobs for people across Queens, so we've seen what they've committed to. This opportunity to grow Resorts World will continue to create some of the best hospitality jobs in the world. They're committed to creating more than 5,000 permanent jobs, expanding workforce, and vocational training, and reinvesting in the community, which means family like mine will have the chance to thrive here in New York. On behalf of the union of workers like me, I encourage you to vote yes on this proposal. I want to add something a little more personal. During the COVID time, we were home, I was home for seven months. And I thank God that Resorts World, because of Resorts World, I was able to have an income for my family for those seven months, and was a family of five. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you for your time.
Calling number twenty-one to thirty at the mic. Twenty-one to thirty, please.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the committee. My name is Guo Ling. I'm the Deputy Chief Editor of Sintao Daily, the largest Chinese-language news media in New York. For decades, our newspaper has served as a trusted voice for the Chinese-American community, connecting over one hundred and fifty thousand readers across the region with news, resources, and opportunities. I'm here to express our strong support for Resorts World New York City's application for a downstate license. As a longstanding partner of Resorts World, I have seen firsthand their professionalism, reliability, and the commitment to engaging with diverse communities across Queens and the broader metropolitan area. A meaning, for example, of our collaboration is our shared sponsorship of the annual Dragon Boat Festival in Queens. This festival is one of the largest cultural celebrations in New York, drawing tens of thousands of people each year. Resorts World's partnership in this event shows not only their investment in economic goals, but also their respect and support for the traditions and the cultural vitality of immigrant communities. Their expansion depends on $5.5 billion investment, thousands of union construction jobs, 5,000 permanent jobs, and significant new tax revenues to support schools and the MTA. Just as importantly, Resorts World has demonstrated that they want all communities, including immigrant and minority groups, to share in these opportunities. On behalf of Sintao Daily and the committee, we strongly...
You're at time, sir. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Philip Fiorentino, and I am with the New York City District Council of Carpenters. I currently hold the position of trustee. I'm a business representative and recently have been elected unopposed as the President of the Queens Board of Business Agents of the Greater City of New York Building Trades. I want to just get a little personal before I start. I worked for Resorts World back in 2010. I was a general foreman for a WBE company. I ran over a hundred carpenters on my crew alone. I was in charge of all safety on the project seven days a week, fourteen-hour days, including a night shift. It was able to provide for my family at the time, for my two wonderful children and my wife, and I want to thank them for that opportunity, and I also want to thank for the future opportunity that's coming for our members. We represent seventeen thousand tradespeople who built New York City with skill, safety, and pride. That's why we strongly support Resorts World's $5.5 billion integrated resort proposal for Queens. This project will create 24,000 jobs, including 5,000 union construction roles. That's a real economic impact, not just for Queens, but for the entire city and state. Beyond the casino, Resorts World is partnering with serious workforce housing to build up to 50,000 units of union-built, union-finished housing across New York City. That includes 3,000 units at the Flushing Airport site just miles from here. Homes built by our members for working families who stood up with Resorts World in May and to announce this partnership, and I stand with them now. So let's move forward with this project and put our members to work, and always remember, union jobs, union wages, and union benefits. And I'll say it again, union jobs, union wages, and union benefits. Thank you and have a good night.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Coach Randy, and I am the founder of American Softball, a softball league for autism and developmental disabilities. We are the only adult softball league in New York City that does this, and also our softball league also welcomes teenagers, too. This coming April 2026, we'll be celebrating our fifteenth season. Last year, we had 120 athletes ranging in age from 15 years old to 75. Also, last season, every player was on scholarship nobody paid. This is a co-ed league, and ninety percent of our players come from group homes like Bernard Feinstein, Service for the Underserved, Life Work, Little Flowers, YAI, Life Spire, and the Board of Education District 75. Resorts World has been more than a sponsor, they've been a true teammate. Their generous grant goes directly to our scholarship program, making it possible for players who otherwise couldn't afford to join. Most of our athletes have no financial means, but thanks to Resorts World, they have a uniform, a team, and a chance to celebrate. Our season runs for thirteen weeks, kicking off in April and ends in June with our very own World Series. Every player receives a trophy, and we will award a special trophy to the most valuable player who shows the most growth and determination throughout the season. We couldn't do this alone. A special thanks for Resorts World for supporting us. Thank you. God bless Resorts World.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Valerie West. I'm the District Leader of the Thirty-First Assembly District Part A in Far Rockaway. I'm here on behalf of the Deerfield Area Association. On behalf of the Deerfield Area Association, Inc., located in Far Rockaway, New York, it is with great enthusiasm that we extend our full support to Resorts World New York City in recognition for their outstanding contributions to the southeast Queens community. We deeply value the dedication, vision, and tireless work demonstrated by your organization to foster positive changes and offer essential services that benefits the community. Over the years, your organization has shown us a true business friend. You have consistently exemplified the spirit of cooperation, inclusion, and resilience that makes our community thrive. Through initiatives such as the state's Public Education Fund, employment of people from the community, keeping members of the Building Trades employed during the pandemic, supporting local organization charitable efforts, sponsorships, and innovating programs. Your organization has impacted countless lives and built bridges among diverse groups, strengthening the social fabric that binds us. We are particularly impressed by your unwavering commitment to realizing the dream for this expansion, which will be the largest integrated resort in the United States. This will be a global destination in the world's borough, Queens. The results of your endeavors are evident, not only in the tangible improvement around us, but also in the hope and inspiration you instill in individuals and families.
Thank you.
The Deerfield Area Association is proud to stand by.
Good afternoon. My name is Brendan Wong, CFO and EVP of Multicultural Radio Broadcasting, Inc. Our company owns thirty-two radio stations across the U.S., primarily servicing the minority communities. In New York City, we owned and operate two Chinese Mandarin and Cantonese radio stations for over twenty years. For over a decade, Resorts World has been more than just a business partner, it has been a true partner to the community. We believe in giving back, in celebrating our shared tradition, and in honoring our community's heritage. This isn't just a corporate initiative, it's a genuine bond that we have built together for over the years. Resorts World contribution to the communities are immense, including both financial support and invaluable intangible efforts. Their decision and hard work have been a consistent presence in the community. The Lunar New Year Flower Market is the largest community event that we co-organize with Resorts World, and we couldn't do it without their partnership. Resorts World provides us with their event space and offers free entertainment and gifts to the families. With their full support, we bring thousands of people together to celebrate the most significant festival in Chinese culture. Their generous support allows us to create a truly special and memorable event for the entire community. For the past fourteen years, we have enjoyed working with Resorts World because they consistently deliver on their promises and have never disappointed us. We share common goals and beliefs, including our fundamental duties to give back to the neighborhoods that sustain us each day. Resorts World stands out as the only casino that has made such a significant and consistent impact on the Asian community. As an Asian-American-owned radio station, we deeply appreciate everything Resorts World has done for us and our community. Their support goes beyond just business, they have become a vital part...
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you to the committee and everyone here. My name is Cynthia, and I'm here today to speak in support of Resorts World's proposed expansion in Queens. Over the years, I've had the pleasure of working with Resorts World and with Ayesha Ma on several community events. I've always found their team to be extremely well-organized and deeply committed to supporting our neighborhood. What stood out to me most was at a few children's events that I organized, Resorts World chose to sponsor quietly, without requesting their logo or any marketing materials. I found that admirable because it showed that their support was genuinely about giving back and not about publicity. I also think it's important to note that this project will be built on property Resorts World already owns, meaning no existing businesses or public use spaces will be displaced. This expansion will bring substantial economic benefits to Queens, including thousands of jobs, increased tax revenue, and improved infrastructure. I recently had the chance to visit Resorts World in Las Vegas, and I could see this kind of energy and excitement a project like this can bring to the area. I'll add that I'm not a gambler myself, I've only played the slot machines a few times in my life, but I do enjoy visiting casinos for the dining, the shows, and overall experience. I believe this expansion will be a tremendous asset to Queens for everyone. Thank you.
That's good. Good evening. My name is Natalia Partier. I'm the Casino Controller for Resorts World Catskills and Resorts World Hudson Valley. I have been at Resorts World for seven, going on eight years. I'm originally from the Bronx, but have family in Queens, so Queens became my second home growing up. I currently live in upstate New York, but I am still deeply rooted in the city as my children attend school here. I came to Resorts World just looking for a job while I was finishing up my master's at John Jay College and Queens College, so I started off as a shift manager due to me having prior management experience. Once I graduated, I was given the opportunity to become an actual manager. Shortly after, I expressed my interest in growing with the company to my senior leadership and was offered the Casino Controller position. I did not have any gaming experience, but the leadership saw my potential and took a chance on me. I am proud to be part of a company that gives back to the community, as this is something that resonates personally with me. Resorts World is a true community partner, supporting local business, small businesses, and nonprofits throughout the community. This project, or expansion as you will, is about opportunity, creating new employment opportunities, the ability to give back more to the community, and cultivating new partnerships. I want to thank the committee and the community for their time, and I hope hearing my journey will help you all understand what Resorts World is truly about, investing in their community and their people. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Keith Hernandez. I'm the executive chef of Resorts World Casino here in Queens. I've been at Resorts World for well over two years. What drew me to Resorts World was the opportunity not to only manage, but also to build a lasting culinary future alongside incredible chefs and dedicated people. Resorts World offers something special, it creates opportunities for individuals to work, grow, and thrive. With fair pay, room for advancement, and countless avenues to learn, this company opens doors for so many. As a leader, I take tremendous pride in serving quality food and, just as importantly, teaching the next generation. Everything I've learned over the course of my career, I've strived to pass on here, ensuring that our kitchens are not only just producing meals, but also nurturing future chefs and leaders. Beyond the kitchen, Resorts World continues to make a meaningful impact in Queens, from supporting city meals to feeding the elderly, to giving local vendors a platform to showcase and sell their products, to funding schools and community programs. Resorts World is deeply invested in the well-being of our borough. These efforts truly strengthen our neighborhood and make Queens an even better place to live and work. This project matters because it represents growth, opportunity, and the future of Queens. It's about creating jobs, bringing people together, and attracting visitors to experience what makes our community so unique, and my food really good, too. Thank you to the committee for listening and for supporting a vision that represents real people, opportunities, and a brighter future for Queens. This is a movement I believe in wholeheartedly, and I'm proud to stand behind it. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sean LaBord, and I'm the Director of IT for Catskills, Hudson Valley, and Queens. I've been with the company for now going on fourteen years, in a couple weeks, basically a day one. My family has lived in Queens for more than forty years, so for me, this is not just where I work, this is home. I came to Resorts World because my mother believed it would be a good fit. With the company just opening at the time, I saw the opportunity to grow with a local company. I started in HR, where there was an opportunity. I saw firsthand the excitement of new employees walking through the doors, walking them through the orientation. Over the years, Resorts World has invested in my growth, and I've been able to do the same for my team. Today, I lead the IT department. I still carry those same relationships forward, watching people grow in their own careers while I continue to grow in mine. What I've learned is that being a leader isn't defined by a title, it's defined by how you show up for others. I've seen good jobs here change lives, including my own. And I've seen how respect, inclusion, and accountability aren't just words at Resorts World, they are values that shape how we work every single day. Our commitment extends beyond our walls. I've been proud to support programs like your college Introduction to Gaming, which opens doors for local students. I'm also a subject matter expert in those classes. And I'll never forget how this company responded during COVID, donating PPE, opening our doors for emergency use, and putting people first when the city needed most. That's the kind of company I want to stand for and stand with. This project...
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Good evening, committee and members. My name is Irwin Clare, Chairman of Team Jamaica Biko. Biko, in fact, is a vernacular for food. Resort World Casino has a demonstrated track record of deliverability on its established promises to the community. As a philanthropic organization, we at Team Jamaica Biko, we invest in the welfare of youth empowerment through sports. Sports wholeheartedly is a mainstay, especially in the Jamaican and Caribbean community. The relationship with Resort World over the years has helped us to help our athletes from the Caribbean... to help our athletes from the Caribbean community, parents here in the Caribbean communities who are great supporters of Resort World Casino, to establish their children through scholarships and through other opportunities so that they can go on and become good citizens of the world. As I stand here this evening, I must say to Resort World, thank you very much for helping us to establish Jamaica's Happiest Man once again. It is through your contributions and helping athletes such as these to go on and become global stars. We want to say to the committee here, please grant them this license. They have a demonstrated track record, and we want to make sure that they continue to be here with us here in Queens, making Queens a better place to raise families, build a greater platform for our children to be good in what they do. We thank you very much for your support.
Calling numbers thirty, thirty-two, forty at the mic, please.
Number thirty. I gave it to you. Number thirty. I gave it to you.
You sat down. You tricked me.
That's right.
My name is Carl Bartlett, and some of you may know me already. I have a foundation, a 501(c)(3) public charity, the Bartlett Foundation, also another entity, the Bartlett Contemporary Band. Next year, we'll be celebrating sixty years, all right? And I work closely with another nonprofit, Young Men Strong. So I've been taught in District 29, starting back in the early seventies. I'm retired now. My brother and I, Charles Bartlett, we worked through everything together, the band, teaching, so forth. We have a point of reference to draw from. What goes on in Queens is very important to us. When we heard that they were going to build a casino in the area some sixteen, seventeen years ago, we heard that it was forthcoming. Everyone was concerned. Well, it's the greatest thing that has ever happened to Southeast Queens, the greatest thing. The contributions that Resorts has given the community, we should just continue to praise them and thank them. Sometime you look back and you say, well, I've been taught them old school. If it's not broke, why are we trying to fix it? This resort has demonstrated over the years. They have delivered. So right now, it's about clapping our hands and saying, go to it, go for it, and give them the license that they need. This resorts now, and this area, has turned into be a community situation. I want to take my hat off to Michelle Studdard for, I don't know how she does it, how she gets where she is. So many places, does so many things, but this is a community situation that needs to go forward. Yes, you have our support. The Bartlett Foundation-
Good afternoon, committee members and people in attendance. My name is Lovell Levett, and I am the co-founder of the Gumbo Coalition in partnership with Resorts World. It is my honor to express unequivocal support for Resorts World's bold vision to create $5.5 billion in integrated jobs. We have every reason to believe that their promise to deliver direct and indirect jobs will happen, because for fifteen years, Resorts World has consistently delivered on every commitment they've made. Mark Mariel, President of the National Urban League and co-founder of the Gumbo Coalition, is out of the country at the moment and could not be here with us, but I would like to read his statement. So on behalf of Mark, "We at the Gumbo Coalition University have had the privilege of witnessing Resorts World's commitment to leadership firsthand. Michelle Studdard, Kevin Jones, Courtney Haywood, and their extraordinary team have been steadfast partners in the Gumbo Coalition Scholarship Program. We are soon to be entering into our sixth year of the twelve-week university program. Together, we have identified, nurtured, and elevated young leaders from this very community, helping them grow, learn, and excel. This is what true leadership looks like. This is what authentic partnership and shared responsibility looks like, and this is why we are confident that the impact will multiply for generations to come, as Resorts World expands its innovation campus, launches a community and-
Thank you. Your time.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the committee for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I apologize that I'm a little nervous up here. My name is Rick Troy. I'm the owner of Atlas Akon Electric Company, a disability-owned business enterprise. We're members of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Union, IBW Local Number Three, and we are proud members of the Queens Chamber of Commerce. We employ over three hundred union electricians, of which over sixty live right here in Queens, and I'm honored to represent them here tonight. Resorts World, New York City's over $5 billion vision would create 5,000 union construction jobs, and more importantly, a permanent workforce of 5,000 employees. Additionally, Resorts World expects to create 14,000 indirect new jobs. Resorts World's community and education incentives are something that we can all be proud of, and I applaud them for that. I think we all should. Resorts World- Thank you. Resorts World has been a strong partner with union labor and is the only bidder with a signed project labor agreement in hand. That being said, we're very much in favor of Resorts World New York's incentive, and we hope that they are awarded a full gaming license. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, committee members and community members. My name is Melinda Murray-Niak, and I am the founder of the Dominic A. Murray Twenty-One Memorial Foundation. On behalf of DomHart21, we fully support and stand by Resorts World New York City. In 2010, the DomHart21 was established with a mission to educate and raise awareness on sudden cardiac arrest that affects children and young adults, bring about change in the placement of AEDs in youth organizations and schools, and effectuate change in heart screenings. DomHart21 has partnered with Resorts World New York City over the past few years, bridging communities and building a culture of lifesavers. Our partnership is centered around the heart of the community, its people. We share an understanding that education and awareness on the impact of cardiac arrest and death in communities and prevention resources are the first step in changing the fate of communities. As community partners working collaboratively, DomHart21 and Resorts World have made a tremendous impact on the health and vitality in the communities throughout New York. We share a mission to protect every child and every heart. It's more than an institution for gaming and gambling. It's an institution that saves lives. Thank you.
Hi, community members. My name is Steven Tin, Executive Director and Founder of Better Community USA. Through the years, we worked with Resorts World in promoting many Asian-American traditional cultural events, such as this weekend, we have the Autumn Moon Festival, one in New York Chinatown Festival, and then last night, a celebration banquet in Fushen, New York. So as we could see, the influence of Resorts World is not just for Queens. It's spread out into the metropolitan area. More important, if Resorts World successfully expand with that extensional license, it can become an entertainment magnet for New York residents and attract tourists into New York City, which New York City definitely. New York residents doesn't have to travel out of New York City for more fine restaurants, conventions, entertainments, and much desired gaming experience. Therefore, keeping viable greatly needed tax dollar for leading the community in New York City. It also can attract US and international tourists into spending tourist money in New York City. We strongly recommend the committee to choose Resorts World for additional license. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Barry Lasky, and I'm the Senior Director of Events and Sponsorships at Long Island City Partnership-
Thank you.
-the nonprofit neighborhood development organization for Long Island City. Resorts World New York City has been a generous supporter of Long Island City Partnerships, Business Support Services, and Community Engagement Activities, as well as a partner to many in the Queens nonprofit community, as you've heard today. We appreciate Resorts World's expansive view of community development in Queens and their recognition that supporting our services in northwest Queens, on the exact opposite side of the borough from their home base, can have a reverberating impact throughout our borough and the city at large. LIC Partnerships takes a similar view to community development and wholeheartedly supports Resorts World's expansion project and application for a full casino gaming license. This expansion will bring thousands of local jobs and a wide-reaching economic benefit to both our borough and our city, all spearheaded by a company that has already proven themselves to be a true community partner in every sense of the word. We urge the committee to support this project. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Clifton Dunn. I'm a day one employer of Resort World, and I'm also a proud member of the Hotel Gaming Trade Council and also resident of Queens. Resort World has already created thousands of jobs, and with this project, it's committed to create 5,000 construction jobs and an additional 5,000 permanent jobs with good salaries and benefits. These jobs also aren't just going to anyone. More than half of the jobs created will go to residents of Queens, guaranteeing that our community will benefit. Resort World also dedicated to investing in education, workforce development, program to create even more opportunities for Southeast Queens residents. This is a type of project that does not come along often, and we deserve this chance to improve our quality of lives. Please vote yes on this proposal. Thank you.
Good afternoon, CAC members, and let me shout out to my old friend, Honorable Senator James Sanders. My name is Terrence Park. I represent, I serve Asian American Voters Alliance. One of the greatest assets in a free world, democratic society, is participation and sharing. Over the past fifteen years, we have seen the world, Resort World has been working with our community, dive deep in our community, understand our community's needs, and sharing their dream, and they have participated for fifteen years and willing to participate forever in our community. Therefore, I believe this project is really good for the community, good for the borough, good for the city, and we, the strong half-million Asian American Voters Alliance, support this project, and I hope CAC members approve it, too. Thank you.
All right. My name is Aaliyah Abraham, and I am truly excited to talk about how much I love Resorts World for my community. I'm the founder of the Black Resource Network, a community of over 45,000 black residents, families, and small business owners in Queens, New York. Our relationship with Resorts World is newer. We partnered with them in June to bring a Black Business and Wealth Expo to Queens, New York, the first of its kind, and I just want to say thank you to Michelle and Resorts World for supporting us and supporting our businesses. But if you're in Queens, you know the good work of Resorts World. We've seen them consistently invest in community programs and events that reach the people that we serve. It's something that I've noticed a while ago. Like, if there's something good happening for our community, Resorts World is probably a sponsor, and I've noticed that. Their support has sparked business growth, brought resources into our neighborhoods, and created a space for our community to build together. And again, I'm truly excited. We know this expansion can create jobs, open contracts for local businesses, and keep more revenues circulating in Queens, but don't forget it will create long-term opportunities for vendors, suppliers, and service providers who can grow their businesses by working with major properties right here in our borough, an opportunity that a lot of our businesses don't get. Our focus is small business in the Black Resource Network and building wealth. This expansion creates stable contracts and income streams that allow business owners to build wealth that they can pass down, something very important to me. So I'm proud to say that the Black Resource Network supports this expansion of Resorts World because they have shown clear commitment to our community. We believe they will continue to invest in people and businesses who move Queens forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Calling numbers forty-one to fifty at the mic, forty-one to fifty. Please line up. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Nick Vitale. I am a member of Plumbers Local One for the past twenty-seven years and a proud lifelong resident of Queens. I, myself, love to play table games every once in a while. For too long, New York City has lost their share of the table gaming dollar to the neighboring states and upstate. Why should I be spending my money in New Jersey, Connecticut, or even Pennsylvania when I should be playing right here in my hometown? I have a great career as a Local One plumber. I would love to see the casino built in Queens so my neighborhood could also have the opportunity for a good union job that will provide them with the medical benefits of 401K and a pension. In the end of it, it's all about taking care of our neighbors, and this is a great way to do it. We need the thousands of union construction jobs, and we need the thousands of permanent workforce jobs. I live in Queens. I work in Queens. Please, let me play a few hands of real blackjack and even try my luck at a real roulette wheel. Thank you.
Hello, hello. Good evening. My name is Antonio Beninati. I reside in Ridgewood, Queens, and I am a twenty-eight-year member of Plumbers Local Union One. I am here in support of the Resorts World Casino Expansion and the granting of a full gaming license. The building of the Resorts World Casino would be a benefit to the borough of Queens and the city of New York. The 5,000 union construction jobs created by this expansion are life-changing, paying us with a living wage to provide and help our families, fix our homes, and educate our children. After the completion of the Resorts World Casino Expansion, this will be a new, bigger, better destination in the borough of Queens, proudly built by union labor, proudly operated by union labor. Let's build it as soon as possible. Queens needs this. New York City needs this, and the union will build it. Let's grant this license ASAP. Thank you. Yours truly, Antonio Beninati.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tommy Kneins. I'm the business agent for Plumbers Local One, and I cover the beautiful borough of Queens. We at Local One are in full support of Resorts World and the construction of a new casino and housing, creating more union jobs, not only with the initial build, but creating lifelong union jobs for the community with the service and maintenance of this extraordinary project. I know this to be true because we, right now, have members working at Resorts World, maintaining and servicing the plumbing systems. These added union jobs will afford community members medical 401K pensions and good-paying jobs. In the end, it's going to give us, our members, the ability to retire with dignity. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Shanae Ryan, and I am a Community Outreach Executive and a former employee of Resorts World Casino, and I am someone- of Resorts World Casino, and I am someone who is born and raised in Queens, New York my entire life, and I just want to say that I can attest to the great work that Resorts World has done in our community. I remember the inception of the property, the groundbreaking, the Resorts World cares. I know it's called Resorts World gives now, but Resorts World cares was here when Sandy was here, and we had the Red Cross. We partnered with the Red Cross to provide food, shelter for those who were impacted by that superstorm in 2012. I've also seen the great work that Resorts World has done for its employees, coming from a union employee to management. Resorts World has supported foundation in all of their employees and were able to give and set a foundation for families all across Queens. Eighty percent of the employees were from Queens, New York. You know, represent Queens, get the paper. And it was just a phenomenal experience to work alongside of just an organization that means so much to our community and gives so much for families, and we can truly say with the education, with the community support, that Resorts World Casino deserves this license. Fifteen years in the making is a long time. The foundation is set, the property is there, and I am in full support.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the Community Advisory Committee for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Brian Chen, and I am the Chief Strategy Officer of the Chinese American Planning Council. We are a 60-year-old social services organization with over 35 sites spread out across New York City, including our Queens Community Center in Flushing. As a valued community partner, Resorts World NYC has been immensely supportive of our efforts to advance mobility from poverty for the thousands of Queens residents we serve each year. From early childcare and after-school programs to services for families with special needs and older adult services, their continuous partnership and belief in our work has ensured our community members are able to transform survival into success. With our collaborative history in mind, the Chinese American Planning Council is excited to support the forward-thinking, future-shaping potential of Resorts World's proposed expansion project. Resorts World's commitment to creating thousands of permanent union jobs, building pathways for career advancement, and access to critical wraparound supports for employees aligns with our agency's mission to promote the social and economic empowerment of immigrant and low-income New Yorkers. Furthermore, Resorts World's measured approach of hiring local talent and prioritizing minority and women-owned businesses opens pathways of opportunity for the multigenerational immigrants, individuals with disabilities, and low-income Queens residents supported by organizations just like the Chinese American Planning Council. Thank you again for your time.
Hello, my name is Sandra Charles. I'm a proud member of the Hotel and Gaming Trades Council.
Get closer to the mic, miss.
My name is Sandra Charles. I'm a proud member of the Hotel and Gaming Trades Council, a day one employee at Resorts World Casino and a longtime resident of southeast Queens. I support the Resorts World Casino proposal because it means thousands of permanent, good-paying jobs with benefits for workers and their families. Hospitality jobs like mine are a part of the middle class, and this project will expand those opportunities for people like me, especially with rent going up and groceries being more expensive than ever before. Queens residents deserve the chance to have a better quality of life, and this proposal will do exactly that. I strongly urge you to please support Resorts World's bid.
Good evening. I think we could say good evening now. My name is Daniel Depew. I'm the National Director of Business Development and Client Affairs for Holt Construction. Those of you in Queens might know Holt because Holt really set the standard for including local and minority and women-owned businesses and work at JFK Airport with the Port Authority. We built a project for Resorts World in the Hudson Valley, a project that brought a lot of vitality to an area that needed it in Newburgh, New York, and I have to tell you, I think you have an important job here today. I've never been, I have 20 years lifetime service in public service, I've never seen a public hearing like this in my life. Most public hearings are raucous caucuses. This is really a tribute to Resorts World. It's a tribute to this Queens community, which really I am inspired by here this evening. And I want to tell you, you know, there's an old betting saying that if you don't know the horse, bet on the jockey. Well, here, you know the horse and the jockey. You know that the management at Resorts World knows how to work with this community. You know that the people who are going to build it are here, the unions in this community. And I think, I think after what I've heard here tonight, this isn't a question as to whether or not Resorts World should get a license. Resorts World, in my opinion, and I believe in your opinion, should have the number-one license that's given out, and then let everybody else fight for two and three. Let them deal with the traffic problems. Let them deal with the communities who are upset. Let's make sure that the people who have earned it here get the license. And lastly, money can buy a lot of things, but money cannot buy sincerity, and I hear sincerity from the Queens community tonight. Thank you.
My name is Joseph Privet, and I represent five divisions. My partner, Trent Franklin, and my other partner, Aaron Busher, couldn't be here today. I'd like to say, first of all, thank you, Resorts World. I'm a little nervous, you can tell, but I'd like to say thank you for all your help, and we run a little, I'm really nervous, a little thing with kids. I'm looking for things. I'm so nervous. I'm scared. This is my first time really standing in front of something like this. But yes, Resort World has been detrimental to our program. We run a drills and skill program out of the Jacob Rees and Long Island City in Queensbridge, and it's a free program, and with the help of Resorts World, it will continue to be free. And we're doing everything we can to help these young minds develop through sports and build their confidence through athletics. So with that being said, I'd like to say thank you. They were very helpful with a, with more, we lost a couple of pillars in our community by the name of Ronnie Williams and Roy Beekman. They were very known, well-known sports stars in the neighborhood, and we just have a little token of appreciation for Resorts World, and I would like to hand it to them now before my time is up. Thank you.
You're up next, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the Resorts World Community Advisory Board for this opportunity to testify. My name is Dirk McCall de Paloma, and I'm the Executive Director of the Sunnyside Shines Business Improvement District in Sunnyside, Queens. I'm a 33-year resident of Queens and have been active in our borough for over three decades. I shouldn't have to be going to Atlantic City and to Puerto Rico and to Las Vegas to be able to go to a casino. We really want this project. I'm here today to urge you to support this proposed casino by Resorts World, which will be a wonderful economic engine for our borough, which will create jobs, which will improve our entertainment options, and which will allow our small businesses to thrive and have an even stronger partnership with an expanded establishment. The merchants who make up our bid are huge fans of Resorts World. They go to the current site, they eat, they drink, they gamble, they relax, and they welcome the chance to be able to go to a full casino with entertainment options. This proposal not only creates 4,000 new jobs, they create good union jobs that allow the residents of Queens economic stability, the ability to become homeowners, the ability to raise their family in our borough, and to stay and thrive in Queens. Resorts World is an amazing operator. They're good community partners. When they engage in an event that they're supporting, they join the committee, they attend the meetings, they participate in the program. Their support for our LGBTQ+ program, Sunny Pride, has been incredibly helpful and has helped put the event on the map citywide. We welcome their partnership and support, and we thank them for investing in our community. I urge the approval of this project.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the committee. My name is David Caraballoso. Evening, Senators Sanders. Good to see you again. So my name is David Caraballoso. I am the Assistant Executive Secretary Treasurer, as well as the President of the New York City District Council. I'm also a lifelong New York City resident. We're a family of over 20,000 carpenters, tradespeople who build New York City with skilled dedication and safety, and we're proud to support this $5.5 billion integrated campus that Resorts World has proposed for Queens. This will be a game changer, not just for the communities we represent, but New York City as a whole. Resorts World will create 24,000 jobs, including 5,000 union construction roles to build out this world-class facility. Resorts World is the only applicant with a project labor agreement in hand. They've already negotiated a fair deal for the people that are going to build it, fair wages and fair benefits, which means they can also start the project as soon as they get a casino license in hand. Those are jobs that our members and our brothers and sisters in the building and construction trades need and deserve right now. Resorts World can get to work faster than any other applicant, which means more economic activity for Queens, the city, and the state. Just as important is the commitment Resorts World has made far beyond their 73 acres at Aqueduct. The carpenters are part of a joint venture Resorts World has formed with serious workforce housing to build up to 50,000 units of workforce housing all over the city. That includes a recent announcement to redevelop Flushing Airport to create 3,000 units just a few miles away. Those are units financed, built by union workers.
Thank you, sir. You're at time.
Good evening, Senators Sanders, Assemblymember Amato, Chairperson Bratton, and other distinguished members of the committee. My name is Joseph Casper, and I am here, whatever else I may be, individually as a homeowner in the area, but as the Secretary of the South Ozone Park Civic Association West. My family has been in the neighborhood since the 1920s, when the officers from the 106 used to roam on horseback, and I am here proudly to support Resorts World's casino project. Resorts World has been nothing but a good neighbor in the community. Every month, without fail, they have a resident, they have a representative at our civic meeting. The Resorts World project, it is my understanding, has already been approved by the state, the SECA, State Environmental Quality Review Act. It is, what we agree, a perfect and friendly environmental and community-supportive use for the community where 85% of the employees or more live within a short distance from there. I am very proud to endorse the plan. I want to be able to continue to drive the city field and park in the parking lots, not in a congested nightmare that they presume that they could build, and I greatly support this program and am proud to do so. Thank you.
All right, so hi, I'm also Joseph Casper. Yeah, no, no. I am the Republican-Elected District Leader for the 31st, which borders the casino that this is in. So I just want to say, on top of what my father said, they always make sure to send a representative to our civic association. They always show up. They always let us know about anything that's going on from Thanksgiving to Christmas, the amount of things they do in times of need. This is a place for our early voting, so I don't get how you have a place that's already there, they're already doing so well, they have the ability to make more of that property. So I don't get why we would say, no, you can't get that property. So I don't understand, I mean, I greatly appreciate everyone's opinion, but I've heard so many great ideas from the limited, the limited area that people have to drive to get to where the improvement and creation of jobs that would bring to this area. It does so much more, more benefits, because I know not everyone in this room lives in that area or is around that area, so they do not feel the effects. I think I want to trust them, and I support the casino to improve and create for the benefit of the area. Thank you.
Hold on, one second.
Good evening. My name is Jeff.
One second, sir. Hold on.
Technical problem. Laptop down here, I think just died.
It quit. Too many people quit.
This needs to be adjusted.
Okay, great. Go ahead, sir. The mic is yours. Sorry about that.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Bucaria, and I am the President of the Our Neighbor Civic Association of Ozone Park, New York. On behalf of the, thank you. On behalf of the Our Neighbor Civic Association of Ozone Park, we are proud to express our full support for Resorts World New York City in its pursuit of full gaming license and expansion. Resorts World New York City has proven itself to be a vital partner to Ozone Park, bringing jobs, tax revenue, educational support, and civic engagement that benefit our neighborhood and the greater Queens community. The Our Neighbor Civic Association of Ozone Park values institutions that invest in the community, and the Resorts World has consistently demonstrated such commitment. And as an educator, I'm also welcoming and grateful for all of the contributions that Resorts World has made, and I'm saying that also as a representative of Epic High School South in South Ozone Park. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ashley Lynn, and I'm a lifelong resident of Queens, New York. As a longtime resident of this community, I have the opportunity to see the positive role Resorts World has played in our community over the years. They have consistently shown a genuine commitment to our local area through their community engagement, support for cultural events, and contributions to initiatives that uplift and strengthen our neighborhoods. I've also had the pleasure of getting to know Ayesha Ma and Doreen Chan at Resorts World, and I've seen firsthand how deeply she, they care about our community. Ayesha and Doreen have always been approachable, supportive, and genuinely invested in building meaningful relationships with local residents like myself. Their dedication reflects the values and integrity of Resorts World as a whole. I believe the proposed expansion will bring significant benefits to our community. It is expected to create 10,000 new jobs, many of which will be accessible to local residents, offering much-needed employment opportunities and economic stability. The increase in economic activity will also support local small businesses and generate new tax revenue that can be reinvested into essential services such as schools, infrastructures, and community programs. For all these reasons, I fully support the proposed project at Resorts World. It represents an opportunity for economic growth and a stronger, more vibrant future for our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
My name is Howard Ling. I'm from the Flushing Chinese Business Association. Flushing Chinese Business Association is a non-profit over 40 days. We never get any funding from the government. Over the year, we're very lucky. We have the partner and true friend with Resort World. They support us, they support a small business, they support education, support the culture. Because Resort World always support our non-annual play in Flushing, the most big event in the Flushing Chinese, in the Flushing area. Also, they support our Smaller State and Faller State celebration, and also they support education for youth program. We very honest and fully support, endorse the Resort World to get the license. I think Resort
Good evening, everyone. My name is Howard Lin. I'm from the Flushing Chinese Business Association. Flushing Chinese Business Association is a non-profit over 40 days. Yes, we never get any funding from the government. Over the year, we're very lucky, we have the partner and true friend with Resort World. They support us, they support a small business, they support education, support the culture. Because Resort World always support our non-annual play in Flushing, the most big event in the Flushing, Chinese, in the Flushing area. Also, they support our Smaller State and Faller State celebration and also they support education for youth program. We really honest and fully support endorse the Resort World to get the license. I think Resort World will be get successful, our community will be get successful. They will bring more job, more opportunity. I think the Resort World, the job is a very great, is our future of the Queens. We support that. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bianca Ains speaking as Cabinet Treasurer of Lions Club International, District 20K1, Brooklyn and Queens, and also as former trustee and current advisory board member of Queens Botanical Garden. I think everyone here knows about Queens Botanical Garden and Lions Club International is the world's largest volunteer organization with close to 1.5 million members in over 200 countries. Nonprofits like Lions Club International and Queens Botanical Garden depend on corporate partners such as Resorts World because these collaborations provide crucial funding, visibility and resources to expand our community programs. Corporate support helps us amplify our impact with more people and sustain initiative that might otherwise be underfunded. Since opening store, Resorts World has understood that its success is tied to the well-being of the people around it. That's why from day one, and let me stress, since day one, not because they had to, but they chose to. They launched Resorts World Gives, a program dedicated to supporting local organizations, uplifting families and strengthening the neighborhoods as we all call home. Through Resorts World Gives, millions of dollars have been invested into courses that matter most, whether it's educational, environmental, workforce development opportunities, health and wellness initiatives. Resorts World partnered with different nonprofits and counters, community groups to ensure that resources reach those who need them most. And through my interaction with Michelle Sodar in the marketing team and Ayesha Ma and Doreen Chan at the Asian Marketing Team, they are always very welcoming and supportive of any surface projects that we approach them with and make sure that we have all the resources that we need. So on behalf of Lions of Brooklyn and Queens, we support Resorts World 100% because they have proven that.
Thank you, ma'am. You're at time.
Okay, good evening. My name is Michael Legno. I currently serve as the President of the Yalipon Environmental Center's Board of Directors. Yalipon Environmental Center in Douglasstown that have been a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization around for 50 years, educating children and adults in the New York metropolitan area. We strive to protect and preserve Yalipon Park, open space and water bodies and advocate for sustainable environmental policies and practices. In looking at the Resorts World proposal, we're impressed with plans to create additional public green space in the 7,000-seat arena all in line with what the Yalipon Environmental Center offers by the trails we maintain and the outdoor activities we help provide for the public, as well as learning about our environment. In addition, the Resorts World development will bring thousands of union jobs, both in construction of the expanded facility and maintaining the casino and surroundings once it's built. I know Michelle started. She's been an avid supporter of APEC and it's apparent that the people at Resorts World believe in what we stand for. Michelle was an honorary at our 2022 APEC Green Gala where she received the Corporate Friend of the Environmental Award. She is a current member on APEC's Board of Directors. Resorts World is already a successful, proven entity. I have to say, sitting here as one of the last speakers, listening to how many organizations came up and they said good things and the funding that they receive and the scholarships and the grants, just to keep going. Really, I was really impressed that they reach out and they support good projects and it helps us to carry on good things at our missions now and in the future. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Yuvie. I'm the City Operations with Everywhere Car. For over 10 years, we've had the privilege of partnering with Resorts World Casino. This partnership has supported more than 200 of our drivers and their families. We deeply value the relationship we have built. We look forward to continuing this successful partnership and sporting their expansion plan. Thank you and have a good night.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Crystal Bonds and I'm the founder and president of Changing Norms, Inc., a nonprofit dedicated to closing opportunity gaps and preparing young people for college, careers and leadership. I'm here to share how Resorts World has been more than just a supporter. They've been a true partner in transforming lives. Their generosity has helped us run our STEM camp, where students from Southeast Queens and beyond gain exposure to science, innovation and sustainability. They've also supported our annual Swing for Scholars Golf Classic and Scholarship Dinner, helping us to raise crucial funds so that more students can access life-changing opportunities. What makes Resorts World remarkable is not just the financial support, but their belief in our young people. They have invested in their brilliance, opened doors to experiences that once seemed out of reach and has shown students their dreams are valid and this is what community partnership looks like in action. As they look to expand, I see the same vision at play, creating pathways that uplift families, generate intergenerational impact and strengthen the local workforce. And their growth is not only about building a resort, it's about building opportunities. Because Resort World, because of Resorts World, more students are prepared to step into college and career with confidence and I proudly support their expansion and thank them for believing in the mission of changing norms and in the future of our youth. And together, we can continue to build a stronger, more innovative and more inclusive future for Southeast Queens and beyond. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Alexander and I'm the President and CEO of Rockaway Development and Revitalization Corporation. And I felt it was so important that I'm here for a second time this evening. So we can talk, we talked about the impact of Resorts World when we think about what they've done over the last almost 14 years now. But what I forgot to really talk about was the impact it had on RDRC itself as an organization that a lot of times has to struggle to make sure, as a CBO, that the doors stay open. What Resorts World New York City did was give us a shot of adrenaline, a mega shot of adrenaline in terms of how we can be selfless in helping others. And so by having a SAGB, a Southeastern Queens Business Incubator, and having that program supported, not a pilot, not a workshop, but a comprehensive program, it enabled us to look beyond ourselves as a singular organization, but to become a part of a growing mosaic community that really is developing local businesses. This first started out with then-City Councilman James Sanders many years ago, talking about how do we grow businesses in Southeastern Queens? How do we get them to be more inclusive and get a fairer share? So this is a long journey. It just didn't happen because Resorts World is looking for a gaming license. This is a commitment to the community. And it's also given RDRC a platform it would have not had if it was not for the longstanding partnership with Resorts World New York City. So with that being said, we strongly encourage you to support the gaming license for Resorts World New York City and thank you so much for your partnership.
Good evening, Honorable Member of the Board Member. I'm here to support the Resort World to get its full casino license. I'm the Chairperson for the Hong Kong Dragon Boat Festival in New York. And of course, you know, the reason that we want to support the Resorts World because first of all, I have known Michelle for a long time, since she was working in the Queens Borough President's Office and she actually paddled in the Queens Borough President's Dragon Boat Team. So she fully understands the impact of the Dragon Boat Festival. And I also have the privilege of working with Asia, who's happened to be on our board. Let me tell you why the Resort World deserved to get the full license. Number one, they have been a great community partner, a corporate partner for the community. And not only that they provide us with sponsorship, which, you know, all the nonprofit right now, it's fully needed, you know, because it's so tough to get funding. Number two, they let us use their digital assets, which they have plenty of them, you know, in Tang, a lot of big screen TV, and to promote the festival. Number three, they also participate with the Dragon Boat Team, which is very important. And number four, they also provide a tent in our festival, which provide a lot of family games and a lot of the souvenir. And I can tell you, the line on our festival for the tent for the Resort World is always one of the longest and that tells you how much their involvement is. So in conclusion, I would like to say that, you know, they have been proven to be a great partner for the community and I think they deserve to get the full casino license. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shaqing Austin and I'm the Senior Job Developer with Queens Community House. Expanding the gaming license for Resorts World would be an incredible benefit to the Queens community. As someone who is in job development and strategic planning, I have been able to witness the growth and the need for this community. And I think that by expanding this project, it will create more job opportunities as well as stimulate the local economic growth. So I believe that this expansion is a great thing and it also would benefit us by having additional tax revenue. So in the interest of brevity, good night.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Camaria Aubrey and I'm representing the Competitive Edge Conference and the Regional Alliance for Small Contractors, a 501(c)(3) that is deeply rooted in the community for capacity building, small business and workforce development. We fully support the project and we thank Michelle and Stacy for all the support they have lent to us through the years and can't wait to see the expansion develop. Thank you all and good night.
If anybody else would like to give testimony, has not signed up, please do so. What we're going to do is take just a 10-minute break. If no one appears to be on that list or so on and so forth, then we'll break. So we're going to take a 10-minute break. so on and so forth, then we'll break. So we're going to take a 10-minute break. If you have not signed up to speak, please do. Thank you. Public hearing for the Resorts World New York City Committee Advisory Committee. Thank you very much for your participation in this process. Have a great evening.